To the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners meeting, October the 6th, our legislative meeting. If we could please introduce ourselves, that would be great.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Alicia Reese, Hamilton County Commissioner, Vice President of the Board. Welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Aluto, County Administrator.
Oh, no legal right here. Okay. Stephanie Summer Doom is President of the Board. Welcome, everyone. We're going to move forward as we often do. Our first order of business is a silent prayer and pledge of allegiance. If you could just take a moment of silent prayer and then stand, we would appreciate it. Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Doomis.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. We have two presentations today. Our first proclamation in recognition of the Hamilton County Communication Center, communication officers for their outstanding efforts and professionalism in response to a possible active shooter situation at Princeton High School. We have several people here. Director Andy Knapp is here. Operations Manager Holly Lampton. Holly is responsible for our training. Would you like to?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
I can introduce them.
Okay. Holly is responsible wherever, who's Holly? Okay. For our Training Division and Labor Relations, contractual issues, et cetera. She's been with the county for over 13 years. Communication Supervisor, why don't you introduce Amanda and then I'll say a little bit about them.
Going down, you were started to introduce Megan Alfani. Megan is on the end. She was not working the day of the incident, but she's a supervisor that's responsible for that, for that day shift. So she came down in support of her employees. I'll start on the end. Cameron Marshall is a communications officer. He was the radio dispatcher for the police response. Bethany Daniel is the communications officer who actually processed the, the 911 call that we received that started the whole incident off, and we'll talk a little bit about that. Ron Paquette was the fire EMS dispatcher. Collectively, I think these folks probably have close to 80-plus years of experience within the organization and, and handling these types of emergencies on behalf of the, of the residents for the county. As a director and as with the operations manager and their supervisor, I couldn't be any, any more proud of them and the, and the reaction that they had and the forethought that they had to proceed with the, the incident that was relayed to them. Fortunately, we, we've recognized that there was a, it was a false incident and we are a victim of some type of, of action that actually happened in four other places across the state of Ohio, along with several others within the region. So there are bad actors that are at work here trying to disrupt our, our way of life, trying to disrupt our public services. Nonetheless, based on the information they had, imagine the weight on the world of, of the shoulders of Bethany, who takes this phone call and, and hears the, the, the incident indicated that there were 10 students that had already been shot, that the shooting was continuing, that the, the, the person with the gun had an assault-type rifle, had body armor. And imagine hearing all this, trying to process that and, and controlling your own emotion and, and following your training to make sure that that response happens. And, and it all couldn't have been any better. It's unfortunate. It's, it's fortunate that it was not real, but it's unfortunate that we, this is a, something that we're dealing with in this day and age. Nonetheless, the, the response on behalf of these folks represents hours and if not, you know, months, days, years of, of training that they've gone through and as well as on the police and fire side of things, the, the planning for such a response to make sure that we can help people as best we can. One of the, the news, you know, video footage that we see that I, that I saw that night was seeing a mass casualty trailer driving by. You know, normally to get a piece of apparatus like that to an incident scene can take an hour or better. And here we had that within 20 to 30 minutes of the response. We estimated about 60 police officers responded from across the county and across the region, including federal and state response. And we had about 40-plus pieces of fire EMS apparatus from out the region that responded. The, the key takeaway from all of this is that we are prepared, we are ready to handle this should a type of incident like this happen. In, in reality, then we have to respond to that. Nonetheless, our focus here today is really to, to spotlight the efforts of our communications professionals. They are working 24 hours a day, seven days a week. When you're at home with your family at Christmas time opening presents, there are folks that are there waiting to take the call if it's needed. Thanksgiving, they're in there, Fourth of July, you, you, you know the deal. And we understand that responsibility that's on our shoulders. We don't take that lightly. It's very difficult right now in our organization, to be quite honest with it, with the staffing shortage that we're experiencing, that all of society is experiencing. Unless we can't sit back and, and, and wait, we have to have our, our positions staffed. And as such, our folks are answering that call. They're working 16-hour days. They're trying to give up their off days. It's ironic, the way the schedule just happened to work out for today. I think these guys are all off today and they, they had an off day and, and were able to come down and we were able to get them the recognition that they deserve. So I thank you for taking the time and to appreciate them and to hear about their accomplishments because there are great things that are going on at our place despite how difficult it is right now to, to, to work the number of hours. It's great to know that we are appreciated and our, the, the work that these folks do, it's so incredibly important and, and we need each and every one of them. So, thank you.
Thank you. All of you are so deserving. We hear a lot about you. And so this is just a small token from the county. We appreciate you so much. And we just wanted to have a proclamation to indicate that and we didn't want to wait forever to make that happen. So I am not going to read the whole proclamation. You did a, a great job explaining why, why they are here. But I will just read a little bit of it. On Friday, September 23rd, 2022, around 10:12 a.m., a call was transferred from the City of Cincinnati's Communication Center to the Hamilton County Communication Center regarding an active shooter at Princeton High School. A second call transferred from the Monroe Police Department was received at the backup site and Blue Ash making the same claim. I'm going to skip down just a little. Whereas the team immediately deployed resources to the scene and several area police, fire and EMS units responded to assist with checking both the high school and junior high schools, clearing the scene and coordinating efforts in transporting students to be reunited with their parents. And whereas University of Cincinnati Medical Center, Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center were contacted about the possibility of a mass casualty incident. Operations Manager Scott Brown assisted the fire desk operator, Ron Paquette, by opening the hospital net and relaying pertinent information to fire and EMS units on the scene. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that it is a relief that this incident was a hoax, but nonetheless, a frightening experience. The actions of the Communication Center team that day and every day showed the excellent teamwork and professionalism that demonstrated the preparedness and confidence of the Communication Center team. Be it further proclaimed on this fourth day, and this is not the fourth day, on the sixth day, that the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does hereby congratulate and thank all Hamilton County Communication Center employees for your outstanding effort and dedication in extremely stressful situation. And this is signed by all our commissioners.
Thank you.
And they said enough of that. Okay. Thank you for taking your off day to come in. And so I really would like to allow any one of them that would like to say something. They certainly could.
I will.
Okay.
My name is Ron Paquette. I've been at the Comp Center for 21 years, longer than anybody here in the front row, including Andrew. Very proud of what we do, very proud of how well Bethany and Cameron handled their ends of the situation. We train, we drill for the potential worst nightmare. When you're faced with that potential right up front, it gets very real very quick. And thankfully, it became obvious fairly relatively quickly that it wasn't necessarily our worst nightmare. Okay. But Bethany and Cameron and I don't get to do, we do without the support of our supervisors, Megan. Operations Managers like Holly and certainly Mr. Knapp, our Director, who, and who always holds right up front. Everything he does, what's best for us and best for the Comp Center, best for the county. I also like to thank the Commissioners for their continued support and because I've known them personally for pretty much the length of my career. The continued strong support of Mr. Jeff Aluto, County Administrator. Thank you very much, Jeff. It's been a pleasure to work with you these years. Thank you all.
Thank you. No one else? Okay. Then I would open it up for my colleagues to make some comments. Vice President Reese.
Yes, I just want to thank you all, as President Doomis has said, on behalf of the County Commission. But I want to take another step to thank you personally because my nieces go to Princeton and they're 12 years old. They're twins and they were very scared. And when I got the information, I think even before their mother and father, thanks to our EMA and everything that you do to get the information to us so we know what's going on in the county. And I contacted my sister and she was like, wait a minute. And I said, I've contacted the two twins and I have not heard from them. But one of them did finally call their mom and said the other one was very terrified. And so I just want to thank you all because of, like you said, you do exercises, but then when it's real. And I think when we thought it was real, everyone stepped up and it starts with the communications team. You're the one to keep everybody calm. You're the one to pull all the pieces, pull the, the plug, if you will, on everyone to let's move. And everyone moved together. We moved as one Hamilton County to save the children. And I just want to thank you all. That could not have been possible without you taking the call, being on the front line, not hesitating, not questioning if it's real or not. And then the coordination that we had, which is unbelievable with the various jurisdictions. I think every jurisdiction in Hamilton County was on the scene, ready to go with everything we have. And so I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the county, but also thank you on behalf of my nieces and my brother-in-law and sister for all that you did and the way you moved so quickly. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dreehouse.
Thank you. I too want to thank you for being here on your day off. I know you don't get a lot of time off and we're very, very grateful for all the work that you all do to keep all of us safe. You know, this situation thankfully was a, not a real active situation, but the response was real and it was active and it was appropriate. And we are super grateful for the training that you all have received and then your response and your willingness to do this work. It's not easy work. We know it's not easy work. People call you in crisis every single day. And every single day you have to be game on. And so I consider you all to be everyday heroes to the folks in this county. And we are very, very grateful for your service. So thank you for coming in and it's a pleasure for us to recognize your service.
Thank you. And we're going to take a picture with you.
All right, great.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff.
Just, just real quick, I just, as Administrator, I have such an affinity for this department. It's one of the first departments I really started working with deeply when I got here to the administration in 2006, as, as Mr. Paquette indicated. Issues were different back then, I think, than, than the issues that we're dealing with, with now. So I just want to thank all of these representatives of the Communications Center for everything they do. We know what a challenge that they face, not only from the calls that they're taking, but just the pressures that they're under. We know what's going on in the broader economy and I, I don't know that there's a place in this county where, where those pressures are hitting in a more intensified way than at the Communication Center. And I know we're working through some strategies to try to address that. So I just want to thank them for their patience and all they do every day to keep this community safe. I think Andy hit the nail on the head. I mean, every day, we know that they are there, you know, regardless of what we're doing, regardless of what time of day it is, whether it's Thanksgiving or Christmas, like Andy said, these, these guys are there and they're keeping the community safe. And when we think of first responders, we think of police, fire and EMS. But really, at the end of the day, these are the first, first responders. These are the people who get called when people are having their worst day of their life. And these guys have to respond with, with poison, with compassion. And the, the ripple effect of that and the lasting impact of that. And I've heard from these people who have had traumatic experiences in the community, only to come back later and say, you know, the only thing that was my tie to sanity on that particular day and the thing that kept me going was the person I was talking to at the Communication Center at that point in time. So I just want to thank these guys for everything they do and that they've done.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to come down.
Kind of go in. Oops, sorry. Watch out. Yeah, yeah. We'll go over here. Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. If you guys want to come, come down.
Listen, I want to, I think about all the words that you've had to say to the people that called.
Okay, we have another presentation. Observing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we have two visitors, but they're not really visitors. Nicole Williams and Danielle Farish-Fixit from the YWCA and Nicole Mora from Women Helping Women. Welcome. So I'll get this started. I'm not necessarily going to read the whole proclamation. We should have one other one. I think we're going to give both of you proclamations. So, but I wanted to say a few words. I've often been asked, what is your impact on this board? And I think my impact is just being here. And, and of course, other things that have happened while we were all together. But I think about, we never had Black History Month. We never had Juneteenth celebrated. And we never had Domestic Violence Month celebrated. So just being in the room, shining some light on some darkness where maybe some people didn't want to talk about it. So that's an impact that I believe that I have had since I've been here. But I just wrote a few notes, kind of scribbled at the end because I didn't plan this. I am a survivor of domestic violence, a proud survivor. I speak to many survivors about domestic violence. And my experience is what has made me who I am. I would not take it back for anything. When you're in the middle of it, you don't realize it, but it takes you to where you're going. It takes you very far. And I'm really speaking to those who are, are listening, those that are in the room. But don't, at the moment, you'll regret what you're going through, but you'll understand later on that it will make you a better person. So help is not on the way. Help is here to stay. We've given lots of money to divert program. We've given money to domestic violence providers. We have found that domestic violence is important. The divert program actually started in 2018, right before I came in. But we continue, we as a board continue to see it as a priority. We continue to send money to help out with that issue. So I'm talking to those that may be listening to me that don't normally listen. But I want to say, don't be ashamed. Don't believe that it's your fault. But don't make the mistake that you're going to try to fix it. I think as a social worker, I thought, oh, I'm going to fix this. Don't try to fix it. Get help, not only for the victim, but also for the perpetrator. Because sometimes even with the perpetrator, it's not their fault. It could be the way they were raised. It could be some mental health issues that, that happen. So we want to get help to everyone. Oftentimes, as we're growing up and we see things going on in the home, it impacts how we deal with relationships. One out of four, now the statistics kind of change sometimes, and one out of four women are impacted by domestic violence. And now the statistics say one out of nine men. So there are some really nice men that are being abused by some women for whatever reason. So we're, I'm talking to the men and the women that may need help. Get out. If you can get out, get out. But do it safely. Please look on the screen. We have the National Hotline, YWCA Hotline and Women Helping Women Hotline. So when we talk about abuse, we're not talking about just physical abuse. If somebody is telling you that you're no good, you'll never become anything, you can't do anything without me, or even if they say, I'm going to kill myself if you leave me, that's abuse. So we need to recognize that emotional abuse that takes place, not only the physical abuse that, that takes place. So I wanted to talk about it just a little bit and I thank my colleagues for joining in with me. Purple is the color for Domestic Violence Month and they have both worn their purple and we did it last year. And, and so they see it as a priority also. And so unfortunately, during the pandemic, the numbers increased tremendously. You can imagine being stuck in a home or where, wherever you are with someone who's an abuser, you can't get away. I even think about the babies who possibly, you know, they were in a situation where the perpetrator was abusing the wife. Now he's hitting on the child. So we're working, we realize that we're working to make that problem better. So I wanted to make sure, I'm going to read our proclamation, but I just wanted to make sure that people realize that this is something that's increasing and we need to do something about it and not to be ashamed of it and move forward and you will come out of it. So I have a short proclamation here. It's a proclamation recognizing October's Domestic Violence Month, Awareness Month. Whereas the proclamation acknowledges that the Hamilton County Commissioners recognized October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas in 1981, the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence began National Domestic Violence Awareness Month as a day of unity to connect battered women's advocates across the country. And whereas domestic violence affects millions, both women and men of every race, religion, culture and status. And whereas much progress has been made since the Violence Against Women Act passed in 1994, this landmark legislation led by then Senator Joe Biden combined new provisions that hold offenders accountable and provide programs and services for victims. And whereas Hamilton County has made and continues to make strategic investments and policy decisions to support survivors as they overcome physical and emotional abuse, including amending the family leave policy to provide additional leave for victims of domestic violence, providing funding to nonprofits that serve domestic violence. And whereas during the month of October, Hamilton County will shine the light on domestic violence by lighting our buildings purple as a color of domestic violence awareness. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners recognize October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does hereby proclaim October 2022 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in all of Hamilton County. And it's signed by both of my colleagues. So I will open it up. Why don't we have our guest speak first and then would you like to come forward and speak at the podium? Yeah. Welcome.
Hi, good morning or good afternoon, everyone. I'm Danielle Fiersek. I run the Family Justice Center here with YWCA Greater Cincinnati. And I just want to thank, thank you for acknowledging this. Agencies across the state saw huge increases during COVID. Most of us between 30 to 50% and domestic violence homicides in Ohio alone were up 36% last year. So we've had a lot of hard work behind us and ahead of us, but the support of everyone in the community is fantastic. And I just keep seeing this strengthening of all of our services citywide in a way that is comprehensive and really provides for especially our underserved populations. And that is the most important thing in the world to me. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having us here. I'm Nicole Williams from the YWCA of Greater Cincinnati. I'm the Director of Residential Services, along with Job and Family Services Collaboration for Domestic Violence Services. I appreciate the acknowledgement and the awareness that you bring into our community about this subject. I joined the team during the COVID pandemic and we were in hotels at that point for social distancing. We're now back into our shelter. And as you stated, we saw a spike in the domestic violence happening in the families. Thank you for thinking of the children because oftentimes the children are not thought about. We do programming around the children specifically to help them. So we're, we're just keeping on, keeping on to help each and every person that picks up that phone, to make that call, to come into the shelter, to get those services. And we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Nicole Mora. I'm Chief Strategy Officer at Women Helping Women. And on behalf of the agency, just want to thank you for not just the recognition today, but for your partnership and support over the years. As you mentioned, you've been incredible supporters through divert. And it is only through that that we were able to grow from one jurisdiction to now 23 jurisdictions and have helped 10,000 survivors through that initiative. And also thinking about our prevention services through the recommendation of the Commission on Women and Girls, how we prevent, prevent, how we are able to integrate prevention-based programming and really thinking about breaking those generational cycles of violence. I also want to take this opportunity to, to thank and recognize all of the advocates who respond 24/7 and are really showing up as those, those first responders in homes, in hospitals, at court and legal to really provide a sense of safety, empowerment and hope to survivors.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Thank you. President Doomis, I just wanted to just thank you again for having this particular day and month because we, we really didn't really highlight the month. I want to thank Commissioner Dree- I want to thank Commissioner Dre House, and of course, I'm happy to be supportive because before we got here, she put in that we needed to finance the, put some funding toward the divert program. And then with three women being elected, we then doubled those dollars. I'm happy to hear that those dollars took it beyond the city of Cincinnati limits because there are no limits and able to help other communities, like you said, 23 jurisdictions. So now we become more countywide, and so I do want to acknowledge that. And I want to also acknowledge, Madam President, I think it was last year, the first year where you brought this up, that not only did we have a proclamation, which you have today, but as you've indicated, you went out and even got some of the private sector to acknowledge this very important issue through lighting up major buildings throughout Hamilton County. And starting with, you know, our, the only time the Bengals stadium goes purple. So I just wanted to highlight your work on this and keeping this front and center and making sure that Hamilton County is aware, and awareness is so critical because there are some who may be out there that need help right now, that might feel a little ashamed or a little embarrassed or feel as though it can't be me. And hopefully, through these efforts and efforts that you all are doing and putting this up, that they can not have have any shame and be able to call and get the help that they that they need. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. I too want to thank you for reducing the stigma related to this issue so that women and families feel free to reach out for support from agencies such as Women Helping Women and the YWCA because you are kind of the continuum of support here in this community, and we're blessed to have you. We're blessed to have such strong agencies that are looking out for victims of domestic violence, whether it's the on-the-site divert program, whether it's housing the women and their families after they've been identified and need that housing, or in the schools to reduce or rather to promote education around this issue so that both girls and boys understand what this looks like and are able to respond to that and reduce the stigma at a very young age. So really grateful for the work that you and your teams do every single day. So thank you for being here.
Thank you so much, and we are going to come down and take a picture. I just wanted to make one last point to our employers. Just to be aware, if you see a employee in their cubicle, maybe sleeping on their laptop or on their keyboard or whatever, address it and talk to them, see what's going on. Maybe they were afraid to go to sleep that night. So I'm just asking employers to take a look at what is actually going on. If you see someone come to work and maybe they have the same clothes on, or maybe their clothes are wrinkled, unkept, talk to them and see, maybe they couldn't get in the house to change clothes. I don't have to tell you guys. But I'm just, just, we need to be just a little bit more aware of that. And so I just wanted to not leave that part out. So thank you. We'll go down here. Okay, public comments is our next item on the agenda. Do we have anything on Zoom or anything? Okay, thank you so much. For my comments, I just have a few things. As relates to meetings, I attended the Ezra Charles unveiling this past Saturday, and it was awesome. It was really good that they, it came to fruition. They've been working on it for quite a while. It was a great crowd. I also attended the NAACP Annual Dinner. Their theme was every vote, every vote matters. And I think that's great because it's very important that that we all vote. I also went down to visit the Cincy Industry Event on, it's at 1628 Limited. I don't know if you've heard about that. That's the name of it, but it's a really small business that is really nice and nobody knows about, and so they need to advertise a little bit more. But Cincy had it in the effort to have us more, be more aware of what's down there in that area. And then the Fort Washington Way, I did a press conference to talk about trying to work on, along with Mayor Aftab, to work with the developers to look at Fort Washington Way and try to develop that top part of Fort Washington Way. Wait until you see the plans and what you're planning on, what we are planning on doing. If we decide to continue to invest, we would be part of the matching grant. And there's a $2 million grant that they have to submit, and the county would pay $200,000 to match, and then the city would pay $200,000 to match if we get the grant. And also, I went to my executive committee meeting that visits Cincy last night and just discussed some of the things that are going on in our county and our region. So that's about it for me, and Vice President Reese.
Thank you. I too attended the unveiling, I think all three of us, that attended the unveiling of the Ezra Charles statue and was part of the dedication. One of the things that is, it bit a lot to me. Fortunately, my father was unable to come because he had a knee surgery replacement. But I was also there to represent not only the commission, but my family. My great uncle Sam Reese was the sparring partner with Ezra Charles and one of his best friends. And I learned a lot from my uncle Sam, telling me a lot about Mr. Ezra Charles, who had a very tough life. He had a boxing gym on Central Parkway, which is now Channel 48. I wish it was still up so it could be a historical site. And Mr. Ezra Charles lived in Avondale. He did not live in the West End. But the West End connection for him was not only the gym, but because of the late Mr. Mallory, who was our Senate Minority Leader and just celebrated a birthday, heavenly birthday this week. He was adamant about making sure we don't forget Ezra Charles. And so he fought in the legislature to get the street and the highway exit. I think it's the only highway exit named after an African-American in terms of highway exit besides the Martin Luther King Highway exit. And so Ezra Charles exit became that, and it was in his district. So that's how Ezra Charles got downtown, having a presence there. So just, it was great to see the Mallory family there, representing their father. Great to see Ezra Charles' son there, but Ezra Charles unfortunately had to leave Cincinnati because he couldn't get a job anywhere. Even the Cincinnati Recreation would not hire him to start a boxing program. And so as we tell the history, these parts are important because it's not so much the achievement that people make, but the, what they have to overcome to get to the achievement. So Ezra Charles had to leave Cincinnati and go to Chicago because there was no place for him here after he boxed. So it was great that the statue was up, and hopefully the story will be inspiring to the next generation to come. And we have a huge boxing legacy in Cincinnati, Ezra Charles, Aaron Pryor, and the list goes on. So I hope that this will be an inspiration for for everyone. Also, I got a chance to attend and give remarks at the opening of the Destiny Beauty Academy. What's so special about that? It is the only female-owned, female African-American-owned cosmetology, advanced natural hair and advanced nail program in the Cincinnati area and probably the state of Ohio. When I was at the state, as a state representative, my committee, the State Board for Cosmetology and Barbara had to report to my committee regarding their budgets. And one of the things they were trying to do is get licensing for natural hair. They wanted to make that a license or certificate. But what we found that there, even though it was natural hair, there was no African-American natural hair schools to be able to teach you to do it. And so this was huge, something we've been looking forward to doing, and it took some years. But they put their own money up, and it's in Springdale. And I was happy to join the mayor of Springdale, Doyle Webster, as we opened and helped cut the ribbon. And we've got exciting, this should be an exciting opportunity of these women who have stepped forward and put their own money up to open up this beauty school. Also, I also attended the NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner as a, as a proud member and a former recipient of the Theater in Berry Award. I was happy to see the this year's honorees and be able to be there to celebrate them. And I think over 1,000 people were there at the Duke Energy Convention Center. And I thought it was very good, had a great keynote speaker, the former national president, and I'm going blank now of his name. But he was our keynote speaker and really shared some national perspective on the NAACP, so we really appreciate that. Also, I was also at the Lincolnware Walking Club. We always promote health, but the Lincolnware Walking Club got a lot of people, senior folks out walking. And now he's got over 500 people who participate every week at Wynton Woods. And so they had their end-of-year celebration, and it was at Revelation Baptist Church in Mount Halsey. So it was really good to see everyone there. And I do have to say, the owner of the, of the cosmetology school, Nicole Taylor, who invited us and her entire team. So I did want to acknowledge her name. Lastly, let's see. Also, very important, we need poll workers. I just got to say that. So every week I will continue to say that if you'd like to be a poll worker, we need you. Please volunteer. I would ask, I have a couple of questions that could be answered hopefully during our administrators' comments. One is, I wanted to get an update where we are with the 513 Relief Bus. Number two, I understand we're supposed to get $40 million for rental assistance. Do we have an update on when that will arrive, or has it arrived? Number three, we have a home mortgage program, and I just want to let people know if you are in a home and you've got some issues, we've got funding to help you stay in your home with the home mortgage program. So please reach out to 513relief.org on our website. I do want to highlight, though, Madam President, Commissioner Dre House. We have also seen, and I don't know if we can do anything about it, but I want to put it on the table. We have helped people stay in their homes. We paid back rent 12 months, three months in advance. And now what we're hearing, or we've helped people with their mortgage, get them up to date with their mortgage. And now they tell people, if you one day late with your mortgage, even though we've helped you, we gonna foreclose on you. Even though we pay the rent, we gonna kick you out now because we can make more money. So we have to, I think somehow, I don't know how, we've got to get the legal people involved. But this is a crisis. They got the ARPA money, the landlords, the mortgage companies, they got paid. And now they're still crushing the citizens of Hamilton County and probably across the country, the American people. Now, we can't let them get the money and run off and then throw the citizens of Hamilton County and throw the citizens of this country out to the streets. So we've got to figure out something that we done paid you 15 months, and a person is one day late, and you throwing them out. Or they 15 months and they're not late, and you're throwing them out. Or the mortgage, you've gotten months and years of mortgage paid up, and then you say, oh, well, you, you one day late, we gonna foreclose on you. This is not what we intended. This is supposed to be a partnership to help the people stay in their homes. But at the same time, the people who got the money are the landlords, not the, not the individuals. The people who got the money are the mortgage companies, not the individuals. And there has to be some responsibility on their end. So I wanted to get that up. Senior citizens, there was a report about our senior fund. This board stepped up. We saw that the ARPA money, you could not get help if you were a senior citizen. We stepped up and used some additional funds that were left over from the levy to have $1 million. Now, we helped over 1,400 people. We've helped more people than people we didn't, weren't able to help. But that money will not be available again until January. So I just wanted to tell senior citizens, it's a pilot program. We understand how important this is, and we're trying to get it back up and going, and I think it'll be January unless something else transpires. So those were the questions that I had, and I would ask the administrator when he does get his comments about the bus, about the $40 million that should be coming, and then also about where are we as it relates to the Bengals and the naming rights. These are questions that the people are asking us, and I don't want the people to think we're ducking, we dodging, we hiding in the closet, we running from them. We've done nothing wrong. But we are public. We are not a private entity. So we have to let the people who are the investors, who are paying for the stadium, know what's going on. So I would ask them at least give an update. We might can't give all the particulars, but the people deserve to have some update, since they're the ones that have to foot the bill for the actual facility. So that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dre House.
Thank you. I did want to start out with information regarding a public health alert that went out this morning. We have seen a dramatic increase in overdose deaths in Hamilton County since Saturday. We had nine overdoses over the weekend, and we've had seven since then till today. So 16 total since Saturday. These are overdose deaths in our county. We, in partnership with Public Health and HCARC, put out an alert this morning. We do this periodically when we see this kind of significant increase to alert the community for a couple of different reasons and to a couple of different audiences, primarily to families of people that are with, people that are using different drugs to be on the alert. Everybody should be, have Narcan in the home or be carrying Narcan. Fentanyl test strips are available, and for those that are using, they should be using fentanyl test strips before they use any kind of substance, and for the first responders who are responding to calls about these overdoses, no matter where they are in the community. What we think we know, and it's all preliminary, is that the overdoses are taking place all over the county. It is not concentrated to any specific area or neighborhood. The ages range and the races range from all the overdoses because fentanyl, we, we suspect is the culprit here, and fentanyl is being mixed in with different kinds of drugs. So people that use methamphetamines, people that use crack or cocaine, who have used in the past and not had any kind of overdose effect, that's not happening anymore. I mean, these drugs have always been dangerous, but now these drugs are deadly because fentanyl has been mixed in with these drugs, and so people need to be on a high alert. And so the alert went out, the media has been alerted, but I want to make sure that everybody, especially my colleagues, are aware of this. And in the press release that went out, should have been sent to your offices, and if it hasn't been, I'll make sure it is sent to your offices. But 16 in that shorter period of time is significant. And, and we have actually seen lower numbers this year than we have from last year up to this date. But this is a dramatic shift in what we've been seeing. So wanted to start with that. I had the pleasure to go out to Mount St. Joe this morning. We all offered a proclamation regarding Physician Assistance Week. There are some wonderful young people over at Mount St. Joe who are celebrating physician assistance. who are celebrating physician assistance. They have been studying that curriculum. They're going to be physician assistants when they graduate. It is the only program in the county for that kind of educational training. And so, you know, we stood on the lawn, we took a photo. But I offered the proclamation on behalf of the county for the recognition of the week for these graduates. I also, speaking of graduation, attended the Drug Court graduation and offered letters to the folks that graduated from Judge Sanders courtroom who have completed the Drug Court curriculum, which is, it's a lot. I mean, they have to do a lot, but they accepted the challenge. They had the courage to do it and they were graduating. There were 33 of them from Drug Court. So I was happy to proclaim again on behalf of the commission, recognition of their achievement. I too went to the Ezra Charles unveiling. The statue was fantastic. The crowd was phenomenal. So it was a beautiful sunny day. So I was glad to be there and celebrate that, the unveiling of that statue and then the NAACP dinner as well. And I think we went to Bethany House. I'm trying to remember the timing of all these things. But the Bethany House opened their new facility. So they've been in the past scattered to about seven different sites throughout a couple of different communities. They have now consolidated their operations. They've got supports in the building. It is a gorgeous building, lots of natural light, lots of opportunity for support partners in that facility. And so they were pretty excited and I think the community is pretty excited about the expansion of those services for families experiencing homelessness. There aren't that many agencies in Hamilton County that target that demographic. And so very excited that Bethany House is expanding their services. Thank you.
Thank you so much. As it relates to the health alert, we all were alerted to that. And I think that alert system works really good. And we're all told about what's going on in the in the community. And Commissioner Dreehouse, she heads a heroin coalition group. And so certainly appropriate for her to speak about it. As Chair of the One Ohio Foundation, we have monies that are coming into our county, approximately about 12 million, not all at once, but within a five-year timeframe to help those that are having issues with some of those opioid issues. And it can't come quick enough. But we all three have been working together to talk about, once that money comes, how we're going to dispense it for prevention, for education, training, all of those things. So it certainly cannot come quick enough. Okay, now Jeff Ludo, our county administrator.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one, no by leave items, just a quick comment. And then I'll be happy to address some of the questions, I think, that Vice President Reese had asked. First, actually, just two quick comments. Just want to again double down on the thanks to all of our 911 operators and everything they do. Was glad they could be here. It's not often that they can get here. But really happy that they were, happy that Andy was able to come down. Thanks Holly for helping to coordinate that. Secondly, I just wanted to give a thanks today to Frank Spataro. I think Frank is in the room, maybe behind the pillar here. But to Frank, to Ed DeMaret, to, sorry, Michelle Santosolo, who's also works for Ed DeMaret and our Human Resources Training Division. And also to Robert Bell. We earlier this week had a group of 80 of our most senior managers in the county take some training down at the National Underground Railroad Freedom Center. Some inclusive, intrinsic inclusion training, day long. We split it up, 41 day, 40 the other day. And it was just, it was fantastic. It was excellent training, the type that I think we'll be able to continue to build on here in the county. So it was really something that we'd been planning for better part of two years. I think the first, we had meant to actually start it literally like so many other things in the world nowadays, right before COVID hit. And then weren't able to as COVID hit and we just weren't able to do in-person training anymore. So we were finally able to pull this off. So I just want to thank Frank, Ed, and Michelle and Robert for all their work and pulling it together. And also for all the employees were there, and I know that they got a lot out of it. So that, those are a couple of comments today, Commissioners. And Robert, there he is. And thank you, Robert.
Jeff, who provided the training?
It was Vince, Vincent Brown, Vince Brown, Janet Reed. And I'm trying to think who, Robert and Diane Jordan were the contractor. What, is there a contractor name, Robert?
The gentleman that died, they used to work with them. Samuel Lynch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it's the Samuel Lynch Group, but they did excellent, excellent work. And so something certainly that will build off and continue that relationship as well. So in terms of some of the questions you asked earlier, so on the, some of these, I've actually just received some information on as early as this morning. So I got a, an email update from Ayesha Howard this morning on the status of the 513 Relief Bus. As the board is aware, that was provided. We got the chassis at the builder several weeks ago. I think maybe a month or so ago, we reported that out. That is currently at the paint shop, will be painted, will be delivered back to the builder for final completion. The email that we got this morning said they'd be looking at delivery sometime right after Thanksgiving or so. So we're still on target for that late November date, hopefully. So we'll keep the pressure on there. We've also, Ayesha's been great about getting and asking for photos. We've gotten some, an initial photo of the chassis as it was delivered. But as it gets into various other stages of production where it actually looks like a 513 Relief Bus, we'll be sure to provide photographic updates to the board as well, just so you can see that that coming along. On the 40 million emergency rental assistance figure, as with the board, we share your urgency on this. And we've been reaching out to Treasury on this as well. I think we got a treasure, an update from Treasury yesterday on this, which indicated that they are still in the process of examining the applications and will be issuing some information on approvals soon, whatever that means. But we have understood that from talking with some of our other colleague communities around the nation that Treasury is, some of these things are going slow and that they're experiencing some staffing issues as well. But as soon as we know something, the board will know something. Obviously, it's a big, it's a, it's a large request that we've made. We hope to get every penny of it. And that will obviously be impactful for how we're able to continue that program moving forward. So I'm sorry, Commissioner Reese, you look like you had a question.
I just wanted to ask, that is two clarifications. So the reason that we've suspended the program right now, we're waiting on the $40 million to come in. But the second question is, have we caught up with the people? Because I'm still getting calls from people who went to Woodline for the Reliefathon. Those people that's in the pipeline, we only took what we do have available. Have we cleared out that pipeline? And if you don't know today, you can give.
Yeah, I don't know as of today, but I'll check with JFS and I'll shoot the board an update on the current pipeline. Because yes, that was the, one of the whole goals was to clear that pipeline before we started them with the new 40 million.
Awesome. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then finally, Commissioners, on the question of naming rights. I know that the board continues to get questions on this. Our office continues to get questions on this. I'm happy to provide an update. As the boards are aware, we have in fact requested all of the necessary information from the Bengals on the contractual and financial information related to the different components of that agreement and specifically whether or not the county financially participates under the terms of that naming rights agreement that was entered into. And again, as the board is aware, but just for, as Commissioner Reese said, for the public's information, I just want to be clear that we've been looking at this issue for quite some time. It wasn't just this year as the, as the team entered into that agreement that we started looking at this. We had always, over the past several years, been looking at what are the prospects of participating financially under the, any naming rights deal? If it were to evolve. And as we've tracked NFL, Major League Baseball revenues from naming rights deals under the current lease, under the formula that exists under the current lease, we've always known that the prospects of financial participation were fairly slim. We've known that, given the terms of the current lease. But at the same time, as the board has said, it's important that we obtain that information so that we can specifically, number one, report out to the board. And the board can report out publicly to the taxpayer and the residents of the community who are ultimately the stakeholders in this agreement, what the terms are and whether there is any financial participation on that. So I'm confident that we will get that information. We'll be able to report that out to the board here soon. But I did just want to address one other issue that I know has been a question. I think I've seen this in different places. But just the issue about whether or not any naming rights deal implicates the board's ability to negotiate on any contractual term in the future. And I just, I don't believe that to be the case. That, you know, ultimately, we've not waived any rights under, you know, moving forward into the future on this or any other term of the agreement. So when the agreement, the lease expires, it expires. And we can negotiate at whatever terms we want to at that point, if it's in our interest to do so at that point in time. So I'm happy to keep the board up to date with this and as we move forward in staff meetings or what have you. Because I know, again, that the board continues to get pinged on this from the media and from the public, et cetera. So as you said, Commissioner Reese, nothing secretive about this. We are asking the team for the information. I expect that we will get it. Don't have it at this point in time, but when we do, we'll be able to confirm those numbers and the implications as to financial participation of the county.
Thank you. Madam President, I just would request, as we're going in, this lease ends in 2026. None of us, including our administrator Jeff Ludo, was in on the original, because these deals are 20-plus years. And the next deal will be 20 maybe plus years. And so a lot of things that are in this particular contract, which a lot of the citizens were not happy about, and a lot of us weren't happy about. I've read it and I know I'm not happy about it. I think we're happy about having certainly a team and we've supported them. And we are still passing things. We just passed $800,000 last week to make sure they got the right replay screen. And that was great because we won and we had a lot of things we wanted to show back on the replay. We're getting, and we're going to get ready to vote today on some other things. But I just wanted to highlight that 2026, we, that's not our particular deal. So anything beyond 2026, that will be on us, our responsibility. And I know all of us are looking to try to get something that's more equitable and less pressure on the taxpayers in terms of their obligations. Now, why do we have to do this in the public? Because the last time, the deal, a lot of paperwork was done behind. The people voted for something and then they got messed up on the paperwork because it was done behind closed doors in secret. And so I just wanted to make sure that, I want, I'm glad Jeff was able to talk that we are not running around hiding and tiptoeing. We are asking questions, but I think the public needs to know the questions that we're asking. So I would hope in the future, maybe at a staff meeting, there could be a PowerPoint presentation or something on where we are. I know we had something on, you know, what, we had the Gensler report, but it was incomplete that came in. And we only had, you know, a few minutes to look at it before it came out. We want to take our time. We want the people to follow with us. We want the people to understand. And we want to understand as we are moving forward outside of the 2026 deal, but into any new deal that will go beyond 2026. So I want to thank Jeff for that update. But I hope that we can have a meeting where we have enough time because it takes time to understand this. But at the end of the day, it's the taxpayers that have to pay this, not one year, not two year, 20 years. So we want to make sure everybody understands and all the questions are asked and it's out or in the open, in the public, where everybody knows. We're not a private business. We're a public business. We have to be public.
Thank you. Are you done? Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you. We will move forward and we have our regular agenda items, MSD has several items.
Hello.
Hello.
Lauren DiGresia with MSD. I have Matt Spederi with me today to assist with any questions. We have three items on your agenda today. Item number one is the Westport Village Pump Station Elimination Project. This is a request for authorization and funding in the amount of $1,411,000 for construction. This is an asset management project that will eliminate the existing Westport Village Pump Station and its associated force main, which are nearing or have exceeded their useful lives. This project will install 1,095 linear feet of 12-inch gravity sewer. This project is included in the approved 2020 CIP, I'm sorry, 2022 CIP for the amount, and the amount requested is less than indicated in the CIP budget. And with that, MSD recommends and requests adoption of this legislation.
Thank you. And what was the estimate in the CIP budget?
It was approximately $68,000 more.
Okay. Thank you so much. Vice President Reese, no comment, no questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is the Glenn Landing Pump Station Force Main Replacement Project. This is also a request to authorize and fund construction of an asset management project. We're requesting appropriation of $467,200 in construction phase funding. Similar to the last project, this project will address a force main that has exceeded its useful life and is in poor condition by replacing it. Also included in the scope of work are improvements to the pump station driveway to allow better accessibility for trucks and equipment that need to service the pump station. In order to reduce construction costs and disruption, MSD is coordinating the timing of this construction project with the Ohio Department of Transportation and the City of Springdale's repaving project along Princeton Pike. This project is included in the approved 2022 CIP for both design and construction. The requested amount of construction funding for today is $202,200 more than indicated due to completing the design and including bypass pumping and driveway improvements in the scope of work. Adding a 10% bidding contingency and increases in materials and labor also increased the estimate. And with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you. More than indicated? How much more?
It is 202,000, I'm sorry. Yes, 202,200. So of course, every dollar matters, but this is a relatively smaller project.
Thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
And item number three is the MSD charges and assessment credit adjustments. This is just for the record, we're requesting that the board enter this into its minutes. This is the annual adjustment of certain MSD fees and charges. These fees and charges are contained in eight sections of the MSD Rules and Regulations and are annually adjusted for inflation per the requirements of Section 2501 of the Rules and Regulations. The September Engineering News Records Cost of Construction Index is the basis for the adjustment. And that is based on local prices for material and labor. In September of 2022, the ENR Cost of Construction Index illustrated a 4.3% increase. So the adjustments reflect that. And the fees and charges that are being adjusted and are adjusted annually are the fee for preparation of as-built drawings, sewer tapper license fee, sewer tap-in fee, holding tank discharge permit fee, holding tank waste disposal fee, one-time discharge permit fee, construction inspection fee, and the assessment credit. So this is wholly separate from the usage charges that everybody pays monthly. This is something completely separate from that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Like to make a motion to adopt items three?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam President, may I just clarify that we just wanted this entered into the record since it adjusts annually. Sorry if I didn't make that clear.
So do I need, is it okay?
It's okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So we'll move forward on our consent agenda items. Items four through 15, I'll just comment on a few of them. Item four, the clerk of courts is authorizing the use of a third credit card. That's administrative within their department. I want to ask any questions as it relates to that for 9,000. Under Commission Administration, 16 million points. Um, under Commission Administration, sixteen million point six, a little over point six. Um, telecommunications retirement leave balance payments and the air quality monitoring grant and mental health and recovery services, property sale and acquisition. I'm going to go down to item eight, which is a resolution authorizing the award of ITB number zero forty-one dash twenty-two. And it's for an agreement between Sports Graphics Inc. and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners on behalf of stadium and parking for the Pay Court Stadium wall pad replacement, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred thirty dollars. Under Human Resources, uh, no charge with this agreement between the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners and the International Union of Operating Engineers. I just wanted to um, note that because it's, even though there's no money involved, we've worked very hard to get this, Frank is back there, uh, to get this collective bargaining agreement and it is a big deal. Um, item ten is a resolution approving the twenty-twenty-three Hamilton County Employee Benefits Program. We'll go down to JFS and a report of actions signed by the Hamilton County Department of Job and Family Services, which is number twelve, for thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars for the month of August. And then for number thirteen, um, it's a resolution, a memorandum of understanding between SOAR whip, um, which Vice President Reese is the representative uh, for that, which is the Work Southwest Ohio Workforce Investment Board, um, on behalf of Hamilton County Department of Job and Family Services for the reimbursement of building service expenses for that property that where they are, their offices are on Central Parkway, for three hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. And then we have an addition travel requests. Um, one engineer employee to Monroe, another engineer, seven employees to Mason, under the Engineers Department and one coroner uh, employee to Bloomington, Indiana. So I'll open it up for any questions or comments from my colleagues. Vice President Reese.
Uh, yes, I just have a a comment, a couple of comments on item number, get the right one. Item number six, I want to ask the administrator that we have two items for uh, our NFL stadium and uh, one of them deals with a canopy. So can you tell us what that is?
Yes, uh, thank you, Commissioner Reese. This is um, we have a fall restraint system uh, up at the upper levels of the stadium. So as uh, employees need to access the canopy and the fabric canopy on top of the stadium, uh, and they need to do so safely, there's a fall restraint system that's up there. So after twenty-some-odd years of being exposed to the element, that system, that fall restraint system, the railings, the tie-ins, et cetera, are starting to deteriorate, come loose, that type of thing. Our risk manager looked at it and said, we have to uh, we've got to upgrade this so that people who are making repairs up there are safe and don't fall.
Awesome, thank you. And then item number eight uh, deals with the wall pad replacement.
Yeah, uh, similar issue in terms of exposure to the elements. So these are the walls around the field and the padding in them. And then after twenty-two, I think we've actually replaced them once before, uh, but the padding in them, because they're exposed to snow, rain, et cetera, they're starting to deteriorate from the inside out. So as people hit them, uh, don't provide the cushioning that they're supposed to. So uh, this is more for the protection of the of the players uh, on on the field to the degree they run and hit those pads.
Awesome. I just wanted to highlight that I certainly support this, but just want to let uh, the folks know that uh, this board, and I know we have, you know, contractual obligations as well, but we're constantly investing and trying to make sure that the, all of our uh, stadiums are safe and uh, upgradable. Um, and so with this, I like this because I see a lot of the uh, lot of the players jumping into the wall and we, you know, we get excited. They jump into the wall in the crowd. We want to make sure there's some padding there uh, so that they, they don't get hurt jumping into the wall. So um, certainly support this and this is uh, almost over a quarter of a million dollars uh, that we're voting on today. Uh, in that, uh, my last thing I would just add, I know that uh, it has our new, the new name on here, the Pay Court Stadium. And I forgot to indicate to uh, folks that was, uh, when you said your update, a lot of people say, oh, well, is it, you know, Pay Court? I want to highlight the Pay Court. I think Hamilton County may be Pay Court is one of our, uh, we may be the top client of Pay Court, all of our payroll. We may be their top client. So uh, wanted to just make sure, uh, dispel any myths. Oh, man, and Pay Court, there's nothing on Pay Court because we paying Pay Court. So uh, I would like to know though, uh, how much is our contract with Pay Court? They are contracted first person, they do all of the payroll for Hamilton County and we may be uh, if not their top, but one of their top uh, clients. So we do have a relationship with uh, Pay Court. So just wanted to highlight, these are positive things, a quarter million dollars uh, this week into uh, the Pay Court Stadium last week, eight hundred thousand dollars. So this board is definitely uh, doing our side of things in terms of uh, being a good partner. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. Um, I just had a quick question related to item number five. This is the sixteen million dollar item and I went through the details of the budget adjustment and see that public or Mental Health and Recovery Services is, I believe, selling a building and purchasing a building. And I was wondering if you could shed some light on this.
Um, uh, thank you, uh, Commissioner Drehouse, that you you just shed the light. I think that 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 is exactly, that's exactly what it is. So um, I I don't know that uh, they have effectively closed or completed the negotiations on the new facilities. I don't know whether that is public at this point or or not. But I can, so this is their facility, though, the facility that they have sold is is in the, or in the process of selling is the one uh, on the corner of Burnett and Martin Luther King. This is uh, the Critical Services Complex. Uh, there's Talbert House down there, uh, crossroads, the Engagement Center is there. So they are, they are selling that facility and they're moving that services complex somewhere else. I just don't know that they've completed uh, the the acquisition of that, of a new parcel yet, but I'll certainly report back to the board. I'll touch base with uh, Eric Stewart today and and get back to the board here quickly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Uh, with no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve items four through fifteen.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And we do have an executive session. Um, I would like to make two comments that I neglected to say before, um, as it relates to domestic violence, that traditionally I will collect um, old cell phones at church every year for domestic violence. And I'm asking anyone who has an old cellphone, um, if you would like to donate it to myself, uh, not to me, but I will give it to Women Helping Women like I always do every year. And Verizon takes all the meat out of it, all the uh, information, uh, because it's very important that people that are in that situation have a extra phone they can go to that people don't know about. So if you're interested in donating an old phone, please bring it to our building and I'll be happy to give it to Women Helping Women. And lastly, there was another statistic that really was impactful for me. That uh, twenty people every minute are abused. So we've been here about eighty minutes. So about a hundred and sixty people while we were having this meeting have been abused in some way violently. So it's just really something to think about. So, all right, so since I had a last word, I'm going to see if you had anything you'd like to add. Do you have anything? Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one twenty-two point twenty-two G eight to to consider and or negotiate for economic development assistance.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.